School District Board of Education Meeting to Order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if you have to evacuate the room, please note the location of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please just remain for a moment of silent reflection.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, universal, liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we remain standing for Mary Jane Nancy Messing, a secretary in the district from nineteen sixty-six through nineteen ninety-five, who passed away on February fourth, two thousand twenty. Thank you, everyone. Okay, four point O presentations. We're going to start with a very exciting presentation tonight. Four point one is Growth Mindset and Student Involvement in Parent-Teacher Conferences with Mrs. Green and some students from Johnny Sholley School. I'm sorry, say your names.
Oh, Ian Osfig.
Molly Davis.
Ah, welcome. Thank you. We look forward to it. Should we sit as we are, or should we sit in the front row? Okay, very good. Take it away. No, we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly and I really enjoy the growth mindset. And we've taken a couple of classes that have been offered through the district. And this year, we decided to sort of put it into practice with conferences and letting parents see what their children can do and letting the kids explain that instead of us yapping at them at conferences. So this was how we involved students using an app called Seesaw, so that parents could really see that children are thinking about their learning and making goals and making progress throughout the year.
And I just want to put in a plug for like team teaching and that at that point because I showed a growth mindset. Mrs. Osfig approached me about doing this and I was like, "I really don't want to learn one more thing two weeks before Christmas." No, and it's true. And she said, "Listen, it's not bad. We tried it, worked with the kids and learned how to do this together."
So how does growth mindset fit in? Well, we find that it's very positive for kids to see that it's okay to make mistakes and that's part of the learning process. And that when you have a growth mindset, you actually do achieve more and you're not afraid to make those mistakes and to keep plugging away.
And we're finding that it really affects the students and how they communicate with each other. The biggest thing that I see is students encouraging each other and saying, "Hey, you might not get it today, but you'll probably get it tomorrow."
So as we said, we use the Seesaw app. And they had a personal report card that was written ahead of time. And then from that report card, they read it through the app, which was about thirty seconds of time. And they were asked to explain when they showed a growth mindset at school, when they thought there were a four in their learning, so a pro, and why they felt that way. And then which areas they still felt they needed some progress in and areas to grow. So the first video I'm going to share with you is Hockebeer Singh, who is in my class. We're going to watch his video and then we're also going to watch one from Mrs. Darly's class.
Hi, Mom and Dad. Thank you for coming to my conference. I want you to know I show a growth mindset when I do my math tests. I'm four multiplication and division. I can prove it because I finish all of my math homework. I need more practice with my handwriting because I write way too fast. I would like to gather my parents out of school a lot more than weekends. I want them to know this because school is super fun and I learn new things every single day. Thank you for listening.
I think we should give him a hand. Isn't that awesome? And now this is Isabel Bieber from Mrs. Darly's class.
This is Isabel. Hi, Mom and Dad. Thanks for coming to my school for parent-teacher conference. I'm so happy you could come. So far this year is fun because I have a great teacher. I show growth mindset when we do math together. We evaluate ourselves after lessons. For me, I know it's a lot I can teach the class. I'm a four at math. I can prove it because most of my homework papers I got four on. I need more practice with reading because I don't understand a lot what I am reading. I would like to tell my parents I do math. I want them to know this because I want them to know I am trying. I hope my teacher tells you I work hard.
So after we asked these two lovely students if they would come in and let us show their videos, we actually asked them a couple of questions and they are prepared to answer them in front of you. So Hockebeer, would you like to go first? These were the questions. We asked, "What did you like most about this project? Why do you feel it was, what was successful of your video? And then what goals do you have for the rest of the school year?"
Um, I liked that my mom, my dad and my brother liked the video. Also, I liked that the video was really fun to make. The fun process was redrying about two times to make it. I felt like the most successful part was that I had a really good growth mindset for doing my math tests, like when I asked for extra homework for a skill that I was not comfortable with yet. Also, I think for the millionth time, adults, my parents and my brother will like school a lot. One goal I have for this year is to get the best grades possible for the third and fourth marking period. I want to do this because at the end of the year, my dad will buy me two pairs of shoes if I get over a ninety-five percent average for my final grade. Also, I want to... Also, I want to try to read the hardest books that I possibly can. I want to do this so that I can challenge myself and start reading some of the books from my sixteen-year-old brother's bookshelf.
Thank you, Hockebeer.
Hockebeer, could you, could you, could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So what is, you said beacons? You like school more than beacons?
Yeah.
Weekends, okay, all right. And how old are you? Eight years old? And so what's with the handwriting?
Um, I write words in class.
Yeah, and is it sloppy?
Yeah.
Yeah. See, my handwriting is still very sloppy. So, and I write pretty slow. So if you look at my handwriting, it's like, I always say like I'm like a ten-year-old. So, so don't worry about that too much. But, and just lastly, can you tell me, how do you, describe what a growth mindset is? Like in your own words?
Like the way that a person thinks about themselves when they do something? Like if they announce themselves, they're doing the worst. If they tell themselves, like, "I can do this," where they do it better?
You're smart. I like that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I like making the video for parent conferences. I got to tell my parents what I'm good at. I told them I'm very good at math. I told them I'm going to show growth mindset in reading. I want to get better at understanding the book. The most successful part of doing the video conference was it was easy for me and I liked doing it. My goal for the rest of the year is to get better at spelling. I'm going to practice by writing each word down until I get through the whole list. I think this is an important goal because when you're an adult, you need to write emails.
Could I ask you, could I ask you a question too? So you said you have trouble like understanding what you read, right? And I've always struggled with that too, right? Like, how do you think we could get better at that? Because sometimes I'm reading a book and I'm like two pages and then I'm like, "What did I just read?", right? And I forget and then I have to go back. So I think you're not alone in that, but like, how do you think we could get better at that?
I mean, the gist of it?
Yeah, the gist, that's a, that's a good, yeah. And some, you know what, sometimes it's like if you're reading for pleasure too, like if I'm not remembering it, I'm thinking, "Maybe this book isn't for me too." So it might not be always your fault. Maybe it's just the author's fault. It doesn't, hasn't captured your interest, right? But, but you're smart too. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Thank you.
And the last part that we wanted to share with you is we did ask parents what their feedback was after having the conferences. So these were just some quotes that parents allowed us to put in to our slideshow about the conference. So I don't know if it's easier for me to just read it. This was from my class. "I really enjoyed the students' videos. It was great to see my daughter get involved in the conference. It was really nice to see my child also talk so freely on the video, sharing her ideas and thoughts. I saw my child express his desire to learn very confidently and show his growth mindset by telling me the goals he has achieved. I love how personalized the video was. Ryan was so excited to tell us his good report. I liked that they are taking ownership and know what they do or don't do in class affects their own performance. Made my heart melt. We really liked to see how she expressed how she felt about her achievements. She seemed so confident when she talked about her success at school." And then, "How has it changed their motivation and desire to learn? The growth mindset has really helped her more, be patient with herself, and it's a wonderful philosophy that all students should learn. We noticed how more in tune he is in focusing in the areas of weakness. She's more focused and homework time is a bit easier. We noticed that she has a much better attitude. She doesn't get down when she struggles. Instead, she says things like, "I know that I'll get it." She also has taken more responsibility for her work and seems to do it on her own now. And just final thoughts as a teacher, I couldn't be more happy with how you feel about learning. You make my heart smile, so I can't say more than that. Thank you, Hockebeer."
Yeah, I think we just all have seen the way that the students talk differently. Especially the students who struggle, don't give up. They are the ones, I think they're the ones who the most that we see do the encouraging in the classroom, have the positive attitude in the classroom. And it's just, it's a, it's a good thing to see.
Thank you.
Hey, Pat, real quick. Where are my students? Mr. Singh, I can't see her. Where is she? Do you guys know what the opposite of growth mindset is? Fixed mindset. Do you know who has a fixed mindset other than Mr. Utegg? Everyone in this room. Everyone in this room. And why that's important is because you guys are learning how to learn and continuously improve. And I want to tell the teachers, that's extremely important. We have, I come from an organization of eighteen thousand people and we're going through this struggle to the point where we're talking about the growth mindset. So if you guys are starting in a better place than we are and you continually, continuously improve, that's a really important thing. I liken it too when you think about, "How did you learn how to walk?" You crawled and you fell and you stumbled. So those failures aren't a bad thing. That's what got us to the space we're in. And then at some point, we all got afraid to fail. So what you guys are doing is you're starting in a place where you're not afraid to fail. You're embracing it. And I can't tell you how proud we are of you guys doing that in the district going in this way. So thank you for that. This is really important. Anyone else from the board? Okay. So, parents, thank you for raising your children in such a great way and teachers for promoting that social emotional wellness. And I'll say what I say every time students come and present, thank you because we really enjoy it and it's very exciting to see students. And I'll ask your parents, you know, they did a great job tonight and they really deserve maybe some ice cream or something after on the way home, so. Good, nice, very good. So we'll start, we'll follow that incredible performance with someone, something and someone equally as energetic and entertaining with Dr. Kufel, who is going to go through ESSA and district data. And then, more excitingly, our enrollment projections for 2021. I say that tongue-in-cheek. It's very important stuff. Dr. Kufel?
You can say it for long because I, it's not, it's not a weekend and... Although, I am in the market for a new pair of shoes though, so I'm just thinking, great job. All right. Think we're, we're on here. So thank you, Mr. Utegg, for that warm and generous welcome. So enrollment projections, the reason everybody came here tonight, I'll start there. For 202021, so for the, I guess, last fifty-five plus years, this has occurred in terms of collecting data around the census. Oh, we're not, we're not, yeah, you can, you can, Mrs. Green, you can just hold off on, on that one. Don't, don't let the cat out of the bag there. So each year, we provide the enrollment projections to you, the board, and the community for, to let you know that we, where we stand and where we are in the planning for, for next year and for years to come. As you do look around, you'll notice that there continues to be growth in and around the Lancaster community, new and expanding neighborhoods. As we say from time to time, this is truly a destination district. So the district registrar, Debbie Masha and myself, put this together. Debbie does a fantastic job. And what I want to do today is give you some of the highlights as you have the, the data and the packets in its entirety, in, in the BOE packet. The first one we're going to start with, kindergarten. As we said in the past, kindergarten is where we usually turn our attention to first because that's the one that is, allows for the most variation. The picture becomes much more clear as we get into kindergarten registration, which is hard to believe, next month. And then May and June, we have kindergarten screening. And then, then the dust has settled pretty well, but there's still some additional movement in the summertime. What I will say for the last four years, we've done a pretty good job of projecting where the students are going to be and how many we're going to have. Last year was a little bit of a variation from the past, but still within, within shooting distance, if you will. The projected enrollment for next year for our kindergarten class is four hundred and six students. So that's kind of where we start. And we've been within, I'd say fifteen to twenty in terms of, of that projection in your, in the last four years. The census data overall, a couple of themes here. Basically, for the second straight year, our preschool students, which is defined by birth to four years old, has decreased by roughly ninety students the last two years. K-12 overall decreased slightly by nine students. And then our non-public students, both in district and out of district, has also decreased. And then lastly, when you compare the official beginning enrollment for this past fall with projected enrollment for next year, as we've predicted, which is aligned with the SES study, which you call, occurred several years ago, there's been a slight decrease in seven through twelve, which we've predicted and we've seen that bubble work through the system. And there's a slight increase in K-six. Neither are necessarily hugely noteworthy in kind of what we have predicted and where we, where we are. We think we're in a very good place going into next year at this time. Any questions overall? From here on out, we will continue to monitor our, our students who are coming in and out, the students who are registering with Debbie Masha at, at Central and continue to work with the buildings to make sure that we see, making sure we're keeping a tab on, on the students who are coming in and leaving Lancaster. Questions at all? All right. I can take, I can take that care of that way. So if there are no questions, I'll transition into the next, the next presentation. When there isn't enough students for enrollment, I will say we've been very fortunate that we are one of the districts or in and around Western New York that has maintained a pretty steady enrollment and have seen increases throughout the course of the last decade or so. So we haven't had to really face that issue, but it would be causes with potentially staffing and things of that nature. Good question. All right. So on to the LCSD data, score report card and some next steps. So what I will start with is a little bit of a review. We talked last year and in the fall about ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act. So I'm going to give a thirty seconds, thirty-second refresher on what that is. So here are the seven indicators that each school and each district around the state is measured against. If you think of this as the report card, you know, if you're, with any of your students, your children going through, these are the subjects for which each school and each district is being evaluated against. So think of these as math, ELA, science, social studies, music, art, things of that nature. We're not going to go into detail about each of them, but it's important to recall that. And then each of these subgroups is getting a grade for each of those indicators. So all of our students will get a measure for student growth. All of our students will get a measure for academic progress. But the same with all of the various race and ethnicities, our Ls, our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged. So that's the real quick thirty-second refresher on ESSA. So on that report card, then each school and each school district is categorized by how well they are doing. From the bottom up, the bottom, CSI school or district is where you do not want to be. That is, your overall district or your overall school is in the lowest five percent, ten percent of all schools in the state. Targeted school improvement, that would denote that there's a subgroup that is lacking and is not, not on par with where they should be. And then a recognition school is where everybody is shooting to be. That has not been identified for this past year, but for two years ago, at our last presentation, we did not know this, but the high school was named a recognition school. So that's, that's great news. And then good standing is basically, if you don't fit into one of the other three categories, you go into good, good standing. That's SED's definition, not, not ours, but that's, that's kind of where those four lie on the scale. So this should become of no surprise. You hopefully know the seven schools. Here they are. So you're going to see a theme. Como Park, good standing. Court Street, good standing. Good standing. Hillview. Sholley, good standing. William Street, good standing. Middle School, good standing. High School, good standing. That should come as no surprise, as I mentioned. Overall, the district is good standing. Things that will separate going forward, I think we talked about this. This does not mean that there are not areas that we certainly can improve upon and work towards. There's certainly one, one area that we talked about in the fall that I think is going to be something that we are putting a lot of time and efforts around improving that. But we are overall in good standing and hopefully we'll have a couple more recognition schools this time next year. The report is certainly up on score report cards and SED's website, but we can have some more detailed data if need be. But beyond ESSA, beyond the accountability system, beyond the test, because in Lancaster, we certainly strive to go beyond what the measures are for us in terms of any accountability system. And we are currently in the process of the Comprehensive District Education Plan, the five-year plan, the long, long-range plan, the strategic plan. And we, I'll talk a little bit about the process, but prior to starting the process, we did a hard look back to see where we've, where we've been in the last five, ten, fifteen years and really how far we have come in that short amount of time. And it's quite impressive. And then we've spent a good amount of time looking ahead, five, ten years, fifteen years down the road, to see where we are going as a district for our students and for the community. So some of the things will be pretty familiar, where we've been and you've heard about these time and time again. You'll see we've talked about math goals, the career-themed academies, graduation rate, project lead the way launch, gateway, and then at high school, music and the arts. And we can go on and on and on. This is certainly not an extensive list, but a couple of the highlights. Now where we are going, okay? Based on where we've been, we have a great idea of where we're going and how to take us to that next level. Because in the last five, ten, fifteen years, there's been a lot of work around building the system, building the foundation for the system and building the infrastructure to support taking Lancaster to the next level. So we were, we know where we're going and some of the things that we know are going to show up in this comprehensive district education plan are going to embody the values that you see here. We certainly believe, and you just heard it with the presentation before this, in growth mindset, all students, we believe all children can learn. You know, we believe that there is a focus on continuous improvement in all that we do. And that's not just the students. That goes for the adults in the educational system as well, in Lancaster. We believe that where we're talking about going, and I'll give you a little bit of a snapshot in the next few slides, but the only way we're going to get there is if we're doing it together and if we're aligned within buildings, between buildings, within grade levels, between grade levels. That persistence, that grit, that perseverance, once again, not just our students, that goes for our teachers and the educators, our administrators. And then we firmly believe, and I heard in both, both of the young students here today, that they want to be challenged. It's our job to challenge them, to hopefully help them reach their full potential and then provide the proper supports along the way. So in the plan, you will see specifics that will hold those values true. Couple of things in terms of where we've been and where we are going, just to give you a little, a little bit of a snapshot. About three or four, five years ago, we saw our numbers trending in the wrong direction in terms of Algebra II. And why is that important? Well, in a lot of ways, math is the gatekeeper to student success after high school. What do I mean by that? Well, students who go to two and four-year institutions often need at least an entry-level math course. They take an entrance exam or they find themselves in a math course right away at a minimum. Many students in the state and in the nation are going on to two and four-year institutions and are not being successful right away. They're finding themselves in remedial math courses. They're finding themselves paying for courses that are not credit-bearing. And then they spend a lot more time in those two and four-year institutions and in some cases, they don't make it, right? So we looked at our data and we saw it's trending in the wrong direction. We put a math goal in that said eighty percent of our students, we want at least eighty percent to be successful in Algebra II on the regional exam at a minimum. And you'll see where we were and hopefully where, where we're going. So if you look in seventeen, eighteen, we had about fifty-eight percent, and this number was, was pretty common, fifty-five, sixty percent. We kind of were always in that range of students going on to Algebra II and being successful. So you have geometry, Algebra II, you have the students in Algebra II, and then the total cohort, cohort size. Twenty eighteen, fifty-three percent. This is right around when we had the goal. And this was unacceptable from our, our standards because that means one in two students are going on and being successful. And then you'll see this trend upward. Why do we say that eighty percent? Very simply, for the last at least ten years, our students who do exit surveys when they leave Lancaster High School, eighty-nine, eighty to ninety percent of them on average say they are going to two and four-year institutions. It's our obligation to make sure that they're prepared for this when they leave Lancaster. So you'll see through the work of our math teachers, our special ed teachers, our counselors and our administrators, working together for the last four years quite diligently and quite well, this trajectory has absolutely turned. And you'll see that next year, these asterisks show the potential for the amount of students who can go on to Algebra II and be successful, which is, is quite impressive. Please.
Someone out in the audience or someone watching or whatever else might not totally understand what you say Algebra II. So just to clarify that, students have already taken Algebra I. They've taken geometry. So you're now at that point where after the third credit, students don't necessarily have to take another credit of, of high school math. And so that's the, the important position. And so you're highlighting, hey, listen, we want as many kids as possible, not only to go into that, but to be successful because the next step would be calculus, all right? And that's the key there, to enable them to do whatever it is, whether they go into psychology or they go into math, they go into biomedical or whatever it is, that's the key. the key position. So if people out there didn't know that progression of algebra, geometry, et cetera, they might miss that, so I just wanted to clarify that.
No, that's a great point. Thanks for adding that, Dr. Valli. Because, yes, I will, a hundred percent. And this, what was happening in some cases, and this isn't a Lancaster phenomenon, it's in some cases, doors were being closed prior to the students even know the door existed. So that's, like I said, I can't say that enough, it's a lot of hard work for a lot of people over the last four or five years. So this is some information which may be difficult to see from where you are, but you've seen this before. Once again, showing where we've been the last five, 10 years. In 2010, we had 240 total AP students. We had 462 exams and we had thirteen subjects tested. And if we went back five more years to 2005, you'd see those numbers probably halved once again. And then where we've been in the last, you know, eight, nine, 10 years, we've gone upwards as much as 875 exams, 449 students, and now we have 20 subjects that students have the ability to take and test in. So a lot of hard work, once again, of our teachers and our students and the administration building this infrastructure, building the system for our students to be successful. So as we looked a little bit further in, and remember I said eighty to ninety percent of our students are going on to two- and four-year institutions. And in addition to this, we have dual enrollment classes, which we won't get into, but that's a whole nother area where we're preparing our students for life beyond Lancaster. But we started looking at this over the summer and in preparation for the CDEP. And what you'll see is this captures that data in another manner. You have the cohort graduating class, 493, 502, 442, 4E2, and then you have the number of students that took at least one AP exam, forty-four percent, thirty-nine percent, thirty-three percent. That last one is not finished because those kids could still be taking the exams in this upcoming, but that's where the data is currently. And then of those students or of the graduating of those cohorts, you'll see the number on the far right are the ones who earned a three or above, so they are potentially eligible for AP or for college credit once they go on to the two- and four-year institution. So that just gives another picture of where we could be going based on those values that we showed earlier, that continuous improvement, that challenging all of our students. So certainly, we're hugely proud of this, but we know that we can continue to work there. And the last one I want to show you, and there's no data to go, well, there is data to go this way, but I'm not going to get into the data at this current time. But our K-three principals for the last several years, with Karen Marichioli, with the teachers, have been working on that focus on literacy and really making sure that our kids leave grade three, bless you, by, leave grade three at or above grade level, in the reading level. Why is that important? Well, the research will show that if students leave grade three at or above reading level, the rest of their career is a lot smoother. If they're below it, okay, then there are certainly some challenges that the students are going to have the remainder of their careers, right? So that's going to be a focus that we're going to be looking at for the next certainly five years and certainly beyond. I'll touch on the process, and this is the last slide, but I want to let you know about how we are gathering input, feedback and ideas around how we can continue to push our students and challenge them while providing the proper supports. A few months ago, we did a survey of about twenty questions, twenty-five questions that went out to all the faculty and administration. I think we had over 300 responses, which is a great response rate. Lot of good feedback that we got from that that helped shape the second stage, which is the focus groups. And we got some fantastic comments of areas that teachers and administrators believed we should focus on for the next five to 10 years that maybe weren't on our radar. The focus groups, each of the buildings, we've met and we had another eighty to 100 individuals volunteer, if you will, two hours of their time to help provide additional input, go deeper into the survey and provide other ways and ideas for which we can work towards the goals. And then lastly, we're going to have a K-12 core team, which is going to bring all the stakeholders from all of the different buildings and then kind of roll up the sleeves one more time, look at the data and kind of hammer out a little bit of where we are going and ideas and how to get there, the plans of action, things of that nature. And lastly, we'll be presenting to the board, hopefully this, well, it will be this spring, and that will be the next step. And then we'll roll up the sleeves and make sure we're doing all that we can to achieve those goals. Other questions? I too love school more than the weekends. Just making sure, making sure you're still with me. Questions, comments?
Going back to the slide with the Algebra II calculations, so that eighty-one percent is going to be projected, how many kids are going to go into Algebra II?
That's based on, in large part, current enrollment. So those students will be testing, because that's next year's cohort or graduating class, those students in large have either taken it in 10th grade or are currently sitting in there in 11th grade. So it's a substantial number. I don't, a few years ago, when we set this goal, I looked at some of the local schools and where their numbers were at, and that number probably would be higher than just about everybody's. So that's what I say, when we say we're going beyond the test, when we're going beyond the accountability system, we're not comparing ourselves to anybody else, we're setting the bar to where we believe is appropriate for our students and what they need after high school.
That's great to hear.
I think, just a comment, and I think you said a mouthful there, where we set the bar and we control, I think, what we're doing for our students with their best interests in mind. Because when you start off with, you know, the designations from the state and you could go further with the rankings of schools and things like that, there's many factors in the state's formula which are out of our control, right? And we know that. But we still work to create an environment, you said, you know, we're building this infrastructure, but we're building an infrastructure and a culture of success and challenge and encouragement and engagement and opportunity. And I love seeing the success at the high school level with the AP courses and the academies, but I'm always cognizant of the fact, especially after this presentation this evening, that this starts at the elementary level and then it's carried on at William Street and through the middle school, and it's a K-12 initiative. So, you know, no matter what the numbers or the designations are from the state, we know that we start with a good core culture here and we have people who care about it. And, you know, we fail to mention sometimes the parents, but we have parents raising good kids and trusting in their schools and encouraging their children to take on these challenges and opportunities, and that's a big part of it as well. So, yeah, again, congratulations and I love to see these numbers as well. Mike likes the numbers more than me, but, I mean, I like the relationships and, I mean, I think it's the whole package, right?
It is, and, you know, certainly remiss if I didn't jump in there, because you're right. I mean, you know, Mrs. Green and her faculty and staff here and all the K-three in terms of, we have the opportunity to work with Tricia Hasso from Bosse's, who sits on the state level with standard development and is a math guru, and she's working intimately and closely with the teachers, and they certainly embody that growth mindset, because they know that we can all improve to help our students achieve where we want them to achieve. Similarly, at William Street, these are truly K-12 goals, because you can't get there without that foundation. I know that the parents then, taking the students in for the accelerated opportunities that they have at William Street, you're right, the community, the entire faculty and staff, it's something to be proud of, that's for sure.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dr. V. Okay, we'll go on to 5.0 correspondence. Anyone from the board of any correspondence they care to speak of? Approval of minutes, 6.0. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from our January 6th meeting?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, could I have a motion to accept the budget work session minutes from January 27th meeting? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0 items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Just wanted to take a moment, congratulate our students and our teachers who were involved in the musical about the middle school this past week, and also to wish good luck to our students and teachers who are staying in the musical at the high school this week. And we're all looking forward to the winter break.
Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? 8.0, board reports. Anyone from the board of anything they'd like to report on? Dr. Valli, 9.0, superintendent, administrative.
I have a couple of things. I'll just echo Mr. Abraham's comments and say that the LMS production of My Son Pinocchio was this weekend, and I attended yesterday's performance and it was absolutely fabulous. Congratulations to Mrs. Conlin, her crew and all the kids and all the parents involved. What talent and hard work and dedication went into that. As you know, our music department is second to none and they proved it again this weekend. It was fantastic. Speaking of the great music department, Mr. Goss from our own Lancaster High School was named the best jazz trumpet player in Buffalo, Western New York area. I don't know if anyone knew that, but, did you hear that?
I heard, I did.
Yeah. Those who know him and have heard him play already knew that, but congratulations to Mr. Goss and the Lancaster Music Department for another deserved accolade. Many you know and are proud of the fact that Lancaster Central School District has the only leadership academy in the country. Recently, many of our Leadership Academy students, including Vanessa Uteg and others, had the amazing opportunity to not only attend the lead conference in Washington, DC, but our Lancaster Leadership Students organized, ran, presented and emceed the entire conference, which had over a thousand students. Over a thousand students came from all over the country and traveled to participate, and once again, Lancaster and its young people were leading the way, so congratulations to all. Finally, this is Lancaster's Week of Kindness, which is a unique tradition that started several years ago, probably about five or six, and continues to grow each and every year. Throughout our school district and each one of our schools, there will be dress-down days, random acts of kindness, presentations, paying kindness forward, backpacks for foster kids, hoops for heart events, and of course, the Lancaster Central School District Family Fun Night, just to name a few. These are just a few of the events taking place, but they also, but they do not capture the emotion, the excitement and the kindness that will be on full display. So I encourage everyone to take a little opportunity, some time to attend some of the events and to participate in the fun and the spirit of kindness. It's going to be, already has been, and it will be, continue to be a great week. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Valli. And when I read that about Mr. Goss today, the best jazz trumpet player, right, in the area, I imagined him in a red velvet jacket with a black bow tie, sunglasses on, like in some dark club, like, so I want to know where he's playing next, because I'd really like to see that. I've seen him at the band shell, but I'm sure there's only other venues he must be playing in to get that distinction, right? So congratulations to him.
Yeah.
10.0, old business. Anyone from the board of any old business they'd like? Okay, 11.0, new business. 11.1, personnel items. 11.1.1, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.1.2, tenure recommendation. This is a tenure recommendation for this evening, and then we will present the tenure certification to the teacher at a future meeting. Could I have a motion to accept that recommendation?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Education's report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Education's report? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.2 is a first policy reading for 5741, drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. 12.3 is first policy reading of 6562, employment of retired persons. 12.4 is second policy reading of 7550, dignity for all students. 12.5 is second policy reading for 6121, sexual harassment in the workplace. 12.6, could I have a motion to accept the policy 5672, information security breach and notification? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.7, policy adoption 5681, could I have a motion to accept the school's safety plans? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.8, could I have a motion to accept the food service monthly reports for December 2019? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.9, could I have a motion to accept the 2021 school calendar? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.10, could I have a motion to accept the 2021 classified staff holiday schedule? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.11, it's a Bosse's call for nominations. We received a full listing of those being nominated. We will then cast our ballots in the future. Can I just have an approval for the nominations? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.12 is a surplus equipment award. Could I have a motion to accept that? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.13 is an AIA contract, Young and Right Architectural, for our boiler and abatement at Central Avenue School. Could I have a motion to accept that contract? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.14 is bid acceptance for our capital project. We're beginning our $77 million phase of our next project, which will begin in the summer, so we're starting with bids. Could I have a motion to accept that bid? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.15 and 16 are contracts with Shannon Jeffries and GPG Music, which are both consultants for our award-winning marching band. Could I have a motion to accept those contracts? Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 13.0 is public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak for this evening, so before we adjourn, I'll mention that we have a budget work session coming up on February 24th at Central Avenue School at 6:30 PM. And then we have our next regular session meeting on March 16th at Central Avenue School at 7:00 PM. With that, could I have a motion to adjourn? Questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for coming, everyone. All right, all right.